Going nuts with the strategic plan.
I liked that, yeah, that was very, very good.
Or can we comprehensive plan, I mean?
I appreciate you, you know, I appreciate your insights and that's very good.
Councilmember Tucker did like your joke.
Oh, he didn't?
Yeah, Councilmember Wester did not. Now, her defense, she is from OU, so she probably doesn't understand it. Right?
I didn't hear OU in there at all, so it really doesn't matter. No, I thought it was funny. I said that was funny. Oh, my God, do I need to spell it out for you? Come out here and I'll write this down for you. You know what, you know what, Sean, I was actually waiting on you to tell me because I'm sure it'd be so much more funny from you. Well, you know, you always have your crayons with you.
I do, actually, because I figured you may need some notes from me.
Well, that's true. If I, if I could read your handwriting. It's a love-hate relationship.
Isn't the SEC going to be fine?
Oh, it will be.
Oh, wow, yeah, it's gonna be crazy. Not till 2025, but it's amazing.
It'll be before then.
It's so, it's strong, just in itself now, I mean, it's so strong. But it's the money that's pushing it, obviously, you know, it's always, it's always the money. And, and I think you're gonna see just a lot more rearrangement in terms of the parents' companies. And they're all just gonna be pushed to the top towards the money, the pile of money that's up.
Two or four years, we're gonna have about five super companies, and that's gonna be it.
I think, yeah, it's gonna, they're definitely gonna realign to a point where, you know, they're gonna, it's gonna be all about the money and seeking that, trying to, you know.
I actually think a lot of the SEC before, four years.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry.
I think they'll be in the SEC before four years, I think probably within two, they're gonna be in the SEC.
Is that what you were gonna tell me?
Yes. Between twelve and, now, if they just want to disappear, or if they were trying to do something, I still think this is the most interesting plan I saw on the twelve. Her thing is why you're, uh, after a lot of basic building for Rasta. The Rasta had buyers, rural workers.
Oh, we got a certain. You guys all ready?
Yeah.
Dan, you ready? Is everybody's mic on?
I like Nebraska, but, yeah.
It's 6:30 on July 28th, calling the McLendon-Chisholm City Council meeting to order. If I could please ask Councilmember Willis to say the invocation.
Hello, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this morning's rising, we thank you for how you kept us all day long, we ask that you encamp your angels around about, uh, people that are traveling to and from work, we ask that you give us wisdom, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Councilmember Westner, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the American and the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, our state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to say that the rules of decorum in effect, if you're speaking, if you could please limit your comments to five minutes. Shelley, do you have any one that turned in a comment card besides the two that I have? All right, thank you. First, please, is Mr. Dahl.
I'm Dahl, 238 Pheasant Hill, uh, thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. The two items that I wanted to discuss tonight was the tax rate and also about the employee raise schedule. When I look at the tax rate at the proposed of 19, that is definitely gonna cause a rollback. One of the things that concerns me when we have a rollback election, if you look historically in this town, every single time that we've had a rollback election has failed really bad at the polls. My concern is, is that if the tax rate is raised to the point where it spawns a rollback election on it, it is going to leave the city in a worse position than it currently is financially. So I would encourage council to look at as much as they can of the budget, slim down what you can, and do everything that you can not to spawn a rollback election on that. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was about the employee raises, so you guys have had several meetings regarding employee raises, and one of the things that I see is a 8% flat rate across the board for all employees. It's kind of unprecedented. My wife and I, we've lived, we worked in the corporate entities for a very long time, the only time that you really see a employee raise fee, or schedule, raised up by that much is when you typically look at cost of living expenses. So, for example, if a corporate entity has an employee and it's on a low tax rate like Texas, and they move that employee to a high tax rate like New York or California, that's typically the only time that you ever see that. So what I would encourage the council to look into is setting up a employee raise schedule. So, what I mean by a schedule is, is that, um, Lorna has been in the Air Force, she's, she's completely aware of pay grade schedules. So, as an example, if you have someone in administration, and it's the first time there, let's say they work the counter, you have them in an A1 pay grade schedule. That pay grade schedule will have a minimum, a maximum, and a middle. As that person grows with the city, up in seniority, as well as their, as their performance initiatives are increased, that person can be moved to a different pay schedule, as far as their grade getting increased, from an A1 to an A2, so forth and so on. The thing about it is, is that right now, we don't have, that I've seen, there is no pay schedule that's set up that way, so there's a lot of numbers being thrown around. The thing about it is, is that if you look at other cities, for example, the city of Arlington, city of Arlington has their pay schedule posted online, and every single person in every single department can see exactly where they fit in that pay schedule, and exactly how they could achieve to the next level to get into the next pay schedule. So instead of flat rate, giving everybody a raise regardless of their performance, regardless of their seniority, and regardless of their position, I would encourage the council to look at setting up a pay schedule that has incentives to keep employees for employee retention, but also gives them the ability to actually move up with the city. The problem that I could see happening is, is that if you have a, if you have an employee rate that goes from one year to the next at 8%, the following year, or subsequent year, if that employee rate isn't increased by a similar amount, you could find yourself in an HR pretty much fiasco. Because if that employee does not get an additional 8% that they did the previous year, they're gonna find themselves wanting something different, because there's, there's no rules, it hasn't been set yet, it's not established. So I would encourage a, I would encourage a schedule being placed and creating an incentive system, so that way, when employees do get in, they know where they're going, they know where they're maxing out, but at the same time, they have stepping stones for retention. The stepping stones that you could have can be based off of department assessment, performance renew, uh, performance reviews, and seniority. As long as you have checks and balances, so that way, you, good employees continue to rise, and other employees that don't continue to rise have goals to get there, I think you're gonna be better off in your employee retention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Jody Wright.
Hi, Jody Wright, 1513 Barola Drive, Rockwall. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I first want to say I very much align with Mr. Dahl's statements, and I thought he did a really nice job of laying out some options for you. I also wanted to discuss the proposed 8% increase to the base salary for the city of McLendon-Chisholm city employees. As not only a resident of the city, but also a human resource professional with over 20-plus years of experience, because I started at age one, that's my story, I'm sticking to it, and I would respectfully ask that this proposal not be passed. With the expiration of the SAFER grant, there is no longer any external assistance to support the city with paying some of the city salaries, specifically the fire department. Meaning the city, us, will now be 100% responsible for maintaining those salaries. The city has already added a code enforcement representative, even after paying for the fire chief to travel for this training certification, to which he ultimately refused to perform. As a side note, and I feel compelled to share this, that refusal is considered insubordination, which is an immediate terminable offense in both private and public employee sectors. Regardless, with the planned addition of yet another city employee, that of a city planner, the burden you are placing on the backs of your residents is already high. Current employment trends show employers making significant salary decreases, as more and more individuals are given the opportunity to work remotely. Thereby, it partnered that fact with another fact that anywhere between one-third and one-half of employees would voluntarily take a pay cut to no longer have to travel from the suburbs into the city. I fail to understand why the city would even take an 8% across-the-board increase for current city employees under consideration. Quite simply, it is unnecessary. While I am not proposing any current employees take a decrease, data does not support an increase of that magnitude. While I don't find any data to support this item, I also understand some of the attrition issues within the fire department, and the belief it is related to pay. I haven't seen the numbers, but the national average turnover rate for firefighter slash EMS teammates hovers around 25%. If the turnover rate is higher than that here within the McLendon-Chisholm Fire Department, then I would propose for that team only a couple of considerations. Much like what Mr. Dahl spoke about, a salary, a salary band being created and merit increases being given within that, and I, I could absolutely talk more about that. I also believe an objective salary survey needs to be in, needs to be completed, to ensure the pay range that you currently have is comparable to other similarly sized cities connected to a larger city, much like us to Rockwall. If the range is not accurate, then we do need to make an update to the range, and there should be a one-time adjustment to each individual, not a flat amount, but based similarly to Mr. Dahl's statement, based off of years of experience, education, and current performance trends. That way, you would put them within the appropriate level of the range, and they would be competitively based. These types of reviews should be completed every two to three years as a best practice, so I would encourage the city to put that as part of your financial planning. If this hasn't been done already, this would be my recommended first step. This could result in a possible incremental increase for, for each, but not, not an across-the-board flat percentage. It would maintain internal equity, as it would be supported by each individual's performance. If that has been done, and you do believe individuals are placed appropriately within the, within the range, then another option for you to consider versus a flat percentage is to introduce a retention bonus. If a salary range is already market competitive, you do not want to place an additional annual compounded burden on your residents. Because as Mr. Dahl spoke about, an 8% this, this year, 8%, that adjusts an annual salary, next year, if you give another 3%, 4%, as Mr. Dahl spoke about, you will be viewed as you've given something and you've taken something away, because the expectation is now 8%. So be cautious in how that is communicated with whatever numbers, wherever you ultimately land on that. Be very conscientious of how that is communicated, because once something is given, the expectation is that is now the new, the new norm, excuse me, my, my phone timed out.
I was listening so much, I didn't find you, sorry.
Oh, I, I'm almost done, am I done?
No.
Oh, okay.
Go, please finish.
Okay, okay. Um, by offering a retention bonus, potentially paid out every six months, you are not creating a burden that must be absorbed by the residents, in so much as creating an incentive that encourages retention by supporting individuals to stay and continue to successfully perform their job expectations, it has to be tied to performance. If the turnover exceeds 25%, I would also implore you to have an objective, to have objective exit interviews completed, to ensure you truly understand why these individuals are leaving. While an exiting employee will often cite pay as their number-one reason for leaving an employer, as that's easier to, to get into sometimes bigger or more challenging issues, data tells us strongly across the board and across industries, private and public sector, that the number-one reason employees leave an employer is due to their direct supervisor. So, objective data, exit interviews are really a critical data point the city needs to explore. Beyond that, and not on the agenda, but I would ask that the city also consider adding a requirement for any exempt city employee to live within the city. I would recommend anyone currently in these positions be grandfathered, and so that they would not be subject to this requirement, as that would be new, and there should not be a burden placed on anybody that's come into that position. But any new employee, whether replacing a current employee or filling a new position, I would recommend have this requirement, quite simply, the reason is for accountability. It's very easy to support procedures, processes, et cetera, that you are not ultimately directly impacted by. With the current growth statistics, I believe it's imperative that anyone making decisions that affect our city have a personal commitment to our city. We require, we require residency for any residents who wishes to speak to you. We don't have outside people allowed to come up to this, to this and talk.
We do, we do.
Okay, well, regardless, but we're working. But we also require it for any committee member, anybody that wants to volunteer within any of our committees, whether it's PMZ, Economic Development, CPAC, much less for each of you. We don't allow a council member to represent this city that's not a member, a resident of our city. At minimum, our city staff in an exempt level, because that creates an autonomous decision-making ability, should also have that same expectation. Specifically to the additional position of the city planner, this position will be integral in reviewing every growth proposal that comes forward, and as a resident, I personally would want someone in that position to have the same interest in protecting what we all love as city residents, as any resident would. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Can I ask a question?
We could, no, we just need to talk about it amongst ourselves, so just save your question.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right. Sean, did you want to speak?
Sure. Thank you, uh, I just wanted to give you guys enough data from last month, as you can see, great progress, uh, from the mayor. Last month, we, uh, certainly the, uh, Staten Sea Roof on, uh, there was also the, uh, Metro Doctor, uh, basically, uh, so we should be in there next, uh, five, six weeks. Uh, sale of roofers, uh, they've noticed we also sort of picked up a post down, uh, and everything, uh, chief picked out the color of the street. We also have noticed it fixed the, uh, slop, uh, waterways, uh, a few ways, so that's a lot. And then, um, let's see, we haven't had any kind of budget updates this month, uh, we did order, uh, a few, I went and picked out, uh, some, uh, pictures of the truck. Uh, we did purchase a, uh, for the stove, and we prepared it for the last minute, so, uh, kind of update about this month. Any questions?
Still on track?
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to do two more. Will that always be silver, or was it gonna match this?
What?
The roof?
What's this?
I'm sorry, the roof, I'm sorry.
No, uh, this is Staten Sea, this was, see my dog, Hops, just like, uh, I'm not there, uh, so.
Okay. Okay.
So, Luke, I'm hoping they, right now, will see, uh, I like this car, but it's, uh, Staten Sea, it's brown.
Okay. Okay.
All the matches. Any other questions for your schedule? I'm hoping for sure.
Great. Any other questions? Staff, any questions for Sean? All right, thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered non-controversial or routine and will be adopted by one motion without separate discussion of items. If anyone wants to pull an item for the individual, does anyone wanna pull an item for the individual discussion? So that's pertaining to items five point one to five point six. Does anyone want to exclude those from the mass vote? All right, do I have a motion? Uh, would someone like to make a motion then for approving the consent agenda items?
We make a motion to accept the consent agenda for items five point one through five point six.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And so that's unanimous? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and jump around a little bit if I could, Lisa. Go to, go to some of the lighter issues first. So if we could jump over to six point three, start with that one, the, um, work session. We could, we could jump over to that?
Sure. We've had a request from a developer who has... We've had a request from a developer who, um, is developing a large piece of property with about a hundred acres in the city limits and that remained during the ETJ. They would like to have a joint work session between P and Z and council. I've checked the mayor's schedule and I checked their schedule and August eighteenth looks to be a good day. So I wanted to see if we could get something arranged with council to do that.
Can you all look at your schedule?
It's gonna be a little bit tricky with planning since our comp plan is not complete yet, but I can't stop applications from coming in.
Right, I think this developer's going to give us, this is what we, this is what we'd like to do and get our feelings in a broad sense.
I'm sorry, again, what date?
It's August eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Yeah.
I'm free.
Are you free?
Yes.
Are you free?
Sure I am.
Okay, do we have a motion?
And at six thirty again?
Would you like to do it six thirty or seven? Cause I know P and Z's been asking for meetings to be at seven.
They probably appreciate seven.
All right. So do I have a motion or some to call for a special?
I'd make a motion to have a, um, a special joint city council and planning and zoning work session scheduled for the eighteenth of August.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any question, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, that was unanimous. What?
Just real fast on that, I am, I always feel this is one thing I feel most strongly about doing what I do for twenty-two years. I don't know anything about this particular developer, but ninety-nine point nine 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 out of a hundred, what developers are doing is they're trying to do it in and of one when they have situations like this. With council's permission, I will be here on the eighteenth. Cause what they wanna do is they don't wanna follow the rules, they don't wanna follow the law, and they wanna get a pre-approval. Anything that you tell them that you like, I guarantee they will shove it down your throat. Well, you said in that special meeting, we had that work session with P and Z, y'all like this idea, this is what we're doing. They will not give you the right, which you have, of trying to intimidate you into not letting you realize you can change your mind. So I, I, all I'm doing is giving you the heads up that anything you say in the meeting, they will remember. They will write it down, they will record it, and they will bring it back up. I, I just, I just wanna caution you on that. And I'm not gonna let them put you all in a position where they can get a straw vote.
And who is with them?
And if they ask, well, so is any of y'all?
They've been around the block or two.
If there are any of y'all in the council that have a problem like that, that's a straw vote right there. I'm gonna instruct y'all on the answer. And it could potentially make them mad, but you're not allowed to vote on something that...
No.
They're not getting in trouble for violating the meetings act. That would be y'all, not them. And I understand this sounds a little bit harsh, but I have dealt with so many developers. And I don't want them to ask you your opinion in a situation like this to get any type of consensus whatsoever. They need to take it to P and Z, they need to pay the fee to get it taken to P and Z, then it needs to come to council, they need to follow the rules. That's part of doing the development inside the city, inside the ETJ. So I just wanna caution the council, it may think like I am shunting things off and trunking their presentation. To a certain extent, I might, I would rather err on the side of caution and not let y'all even come close to a violation of the open meetings act than give them what they want. And I, I may have to talk to them beforehand, just so they, it's not a surprise to be fair to them, say if it comes even close to y'all asking the council's opinion of whether they approve of something or not, say no, just, just a half way out.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I kinda saw like a lot of this where it popped up because being on P and Z, I haven't seen this kind of a joint session before that has come up before us first. And so, you know, I totally understand you talking about your, you know, request that you be there at the meeting just to protect us. Cause I think, yeah, the developers have intent and motive and, uh, sometimes it's subtle and sometimes it's not, when it's not so, or when it is so. It's hard to differentiate what they're asking for, you know, what they want. Having been on P and Z, I think it's true.
Okay, yeah, that's true. Keen?
Lisa, you were gonna say something?
I, I take Michael's point very well. This development is quite different than any other that we've seen since at least I've been here. This is extremely large, it's got the potential to double the population of Midland and Chisholm. With the comp plan not being finished, there isn't adequate direction out there for P and Z to even hear the case and know what the heck to do with it. So at this point, all I'm proposing is that we let them present what they have, and then we talk about process going forward as a group without them. So we can do that following.
Right, I think, I think the intent was to get more than just two people aware of what's going on. And by involving P and Z, since this is definitely in their wheelhouse, and involving council, we're all on the same sheet of music to know that this is looming out there. So I think that was the intent of having a meeting.
And I don't think that's bad, I just, it always makes me nervous, like, cause councilwoman Tucker, she was very right. It could be so subtle, they could do a presentation with certain things and so be y'all like that, whoa, no, doesn't matter, that's like, so that's...
I think, Michael, it might be helpful if you are gonna be at that meeting, that maybe you could set the ground rules at the beginning of the meeting like that.
I can do that.
And talk to them about just presenting the facts and then maybe answering some straightforward questions. But not going into, do you like and opinions and that sort of thing.
I can do that. And I'm, like I said, I'll be very honest with you from the beginning, if, if I hear that, I'm gonna err on the side of caution and just instruct y'all not to say anything. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good idea to know somebody this big coming into the city and into ETJ, possibly then being the, for y'all to have some information about it is not a bad idea at all. I just, in theory, it always makes me, you know, err, stand on end and it's gonna be, you know, like you said, subtle and less subtle.
Okay, so I think we already had voted that it was okay to have that meeting. But I'm glad we got additional guidance, so that was very helpful.
I just wanted to give y'all a heads up.
Okay, let's, uh, let's jump...
I'm maybe a jerk, I'm a jerk for y'all.
Yeah, you're a jerk.
You're a jerk.
Thanks, you wrote it.
Okay, let's, uh, let's backtrack now and discuss item number six point one, which is discussion and possible action or direction to staff regarding the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget and tax rate adoption, including the adoption calendar, changing the previously scheduled public hearing dates, funding priorities, proposed budget, and tax rate scenarios and related matters. Lisa, if you could please, uh, open up this discussion, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, so, um, as you know, that we've been waiting on the truth in taxation calculations from Arcad. I would like to give a little kudos to Arcad because they got these to us earlier than they had to. Because we're adopting early, it puts them in a bad situation as well as us. I had a deadline yesterday to get this to the paper before the end of the day, and they, they managed to do the work. So I emailed you the calculation sheets, just so you could kind of see what goes into those calculation sheets. That one is not in your packet. But I do kinda just wanna go over kind of where we are to date with the numbers. So our accountant was pretty darned close as far as the estimates of where we would end up with the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. So the current proposed rate of nineteen cents is higher than the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. The voter approval rate is the highest rate that MC may adopt without pulling an automatic election to seek voter approval of the rate unless the de minimis rate exceeds the voter approval rate. The de minimis rate is a rate that would raise, um, the revenue by five hundred thousand dollars. That rate comes out to twenty-two cents. So we're in the position to where we are, um, the nineteen cents that's proposed is greater than the voter approval rate, greater than the no new revenue rate, but it is under the de minimis rate. So where that puts us is, um, the proposed rate does allow voters to petition for an election to bring the tax rate to the voter approval rate, uh, under the tax code. So the only way you're gonna get out of that situation is if you put that rate below the voter approval rate, and that rate is thirteen-three. Our voter approval rate due to our property tax for sales tax relief is actually lower than the no new revenue rate. That rate is fourteen-two.
So in order to, for the citizens to not be able to roll, or put a rollback, fourteen-six or fourteen-two?
Thirteen-three.
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 Yes.
Yeah.
We're at fifteen now, right?
Right.
So what you're saying is that at a higher rate, they're more likely to petition for, for a vote, uh, to reduce it?
No, what he, what she's saying is that the citizens can petition anything above one, three, three, four, four.
Even though we're at fifteen now?
Yes.
You're gonna be in this position no matter what. I don't see you approving the rate at thirteen-three or below.
No, we, we couldn't balance.
You will, you will not be able to function.
The more likely event is that if it's higher, there, there's a higher probability they're going to come back and ask for, for election or vote, however you wanna express it. But if you tapered down from nineteen to say, and this is just a figure, to say sixteen, there's less likelihood of them petitioning for a vote. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a practical way of looking at it, am I correct?
Yes.
So, understood, I, I understand it.
Great.
But there may be a, a certain segment of the population that's...
Yeah, they've got...
If you're at thirteen-three or above, they may have already decided, we just don't know.
And, and what's the, what's the criteria for introducing a vote? Is there, do you have to have a certain number of citizens?
Yes.
Yes, it's, uh, it goes by registered voters in the last election, and I can't remember.
I wrote it, I have it. It's, uh, it requires three percent signature of the registered voters for, in our case, that would be eighty-one signatures. And it, uh, they have to submit that petition to city council not later than the ninetieth day after, uh, date on which the city council adopts the tax rate, so...
So you'd be looking at, because this is not an automatic election and, and they need time to, to do the petition, if they did so, uh, you'd actually be looking at having a rollback election in May, and then you're three quarters away through the year.
Yeah. So, um...
It's terrible for this meeting.
There's, there's, there's two other cities going through this very same thing as we are, and it's just, if we do adopt a tax rate higher than one, three, or whatever it is, thirteen cents, it'll be up to us to explain why we did it and what we're buying with it.
We have, I personally feel we have very good evidence on why we need it. My question is, is if we do have to go back down to thirteen, like Lisa said, we can't do that. I mean, we will not be able to sustain our...
You'll have, you'll have to, um...
So, so what I'm asking is... So what can we do? Cause even if we stay at fifteen, they can still do a rollback.
Sure, absolutely.
So what happens if we have to go back to thirteen?
We'll have to use our entire, um, uh, fund balance, our entire savings account to upgrade the city. It would, it would just, it would empty us out for this year, and then next year we'd be in the same position because we would be at that low tax rate again.
So I guess my biggest question would be to the citizens, is that what you wanna do? Because that's what will happen.
But the hole will get deeper every year.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess, I don't know, against what you're saying, but like, how can we function? Is it do bonds at that point? Like, how does the city bankrupt at that point? Like, how, what, exactly what does it entail?
What are the repercussions? I mean, what happens?
The repercussions are if the city doesn't take a stand and try to push that rate higher, and we don't sell that rate, um, and it gets down to the voter approval rate this year, with that property tax for sales tax reduction, it is always gonna look this way. And you will be taking a, a dive into the concrete until the city doesn't exist anymore.
And what happens, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of people say, why do we have a, why do we have, why do we have a city? But you think about it, if, if we don't have a fire department, your property, your insurance rates are gonna go so much higher than any impact of these taxes.
Exactly what you were just stating, we need to get that list going on why we need this. And we're all, all over the place, like on this and this and this and this. Let's get a list together. Get a list together so that when those questions do come at us, here's your list, here's why we need it, seriously, why we need it. If we don't get it, your home on everything else will go up personally. Your, your personal expenses at home will go up. Your, your insurance, your...
You're gonna pay either way, then.
You will, you will pay either way.
You'll pay more.
Exactly, because your home will no longer be worth what it's worth, cause nobody will want to come here.
Well, and plus, you won't be able to get insurance because you won't have fire protection.
Okay, on the nineteen percent, we accepted the nineteen percent because we wanted to be underneath the, the, the de minimis rate. And so that was just a number that we threw out. I mean, we were looking at twenty at one point, so somebody said nineteen, and we all accepted that just to keep the ball rolling on this thing. The likely event of us staying at nineteen, it's in question for me. I certainly am not gonna vote for a nineteen percent rate personally. It's gotta come down. And the further you come down and, and have a compromise, the more, the less likely you're gonna have to have a, a, uh... The citizens come back and vote.
Could I suggest that we, we scrub a budget before we talk about the tax rate? Because you build a budget to fix the, and then you get the tax rate for the budget. So I think we need to go through the things in the budget that are still in question, and what are, where are our major initiatives that we are funding this year? What of those initiatives are mandatory versus what of those initial initiatives are we wanna do? And that's this little piece of paper.
And I actually...
And you, you did one too, and it's very similar.
So I don't, I don't know if you wanna look at mine first or if you want to do yours?
Yeah, yours is fine, that's fine.
Let me just say, can I just say one thing? Is that we should keep in mind, uh, something that's in my mind, is that for every one percent increase in revenue, it's fifty thousand dollars, around fifty thousand dollars. So if you drop...
One cent, you mean?
One cent, yeah. So, you know, I'm, I'm liking to increase the, the, the tax burden here a bit, but I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna get onerous on this thing, that's for sure. I, I think, uh...
And I'm sorry I wasn't here, but I personally wanted twenty-one cents. I felt like twenty-one cents would at least get us caught up on some of the things that we have going on now, along with what is getting ready to come our way. So I personally just felt twenty-one cents would help tremendously. I get it that...
From fifteen, fifteen to twenty-one?
Yeah, I, seriously. I do think that's, I just, we've gotta find the money somewhere. You can't keep, you can't keep trying to have expenditures or have expenses when you don't have a bank account.
Well, we, we have to talk to them. Could, could, do you guys like my idea of let's talk about what we wanna fund and then see what, what that ends up with?
Yes. Okay, so what are we looking at?
Lisa's gonna, Lisa's gonna lead the discussion.
So, uh, you've got a slide, I apologize for this, we're updating our AV equipment, just so everybody knows, this is why the PowerPoint's not available yet. It's, things are here, but they're not all connected.
Well, we put this on our website.
These PowerPoints are also in the back of the room if you need them. They're available here at City Hall if somebody wants one. But if you'll kind of go to this slide, uh, budget highlights, uh, this is not everything, but these are the things that, um, this nineteen cents pays for. So one is that eight percent salary increase. That amounts to thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-two nine. Uh, that is a cost of living plus, um, an attempt at starting to close the gap between us and the other cities. Uh, it pays for the code officer to go from part-time, twenty-five hours a week, to go to full-time, and also for him to take on the duties of the registered sanitarian. Those are the septic inspections and reviews. So between the offsets, that actually only adds fifteen thousand eight hundred. And I know only sounds like I'm trying to demean that, I'm not, I'm just, um, it's, it's a pretty good value actually, because we don't have to have Kelly services, Kelly Stockburger services to do those septic reviews. The code officer takes on some of those, um, that only amounts to a fifteen thousand dollar increase. Code officer operating budget, uh, this added thirty-one thousand, um, plus fuel and vehicle maintenance of another twelve hundred seventy-five. We didn't give him an operating budget this year, so if we want him to be effective, uh, for instance, houses that are dilapidated, we can order them all day long to come down. But for absentee owners, people that live out of state, people that just don't care, at some point in time, you may need to go in, demolish it after you go through the proper proceedings, and then put a lien on the house. But to take down a house could be eight to ten thousand dollars depending on the size of the house and the condition. A hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, goes to make up the difference for the SAFER grant, because we are in the last year of that. That pays for firefighter salaries and benefits. There is a twenty thousand dollar strategic plan built into the consulting expenses, and we, that was in there because, uh, we're doing the comp plan and we just, we feel like there are things that are gonna come to light out of this comp plan that we're gonna wanna move forward with. And so that's to help us plan. Uh, the road budget increased, um, we've got that currently at one seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Seventy-five of that is for road maintenance, for the roads that we maintain, including Smith Pooling Pluts and League. It does not include the Sonoma Verde Roads. And it includes a cost share of a hundred thousand dollars for Edwards Road. So, um, right now we're talking with the developer Sonoma Verde, because they've got two exits that are gonna go, that are gonna go out to Edwards Road and the county about doing a road share, uh, cost for improvements on that. League Road has some drainage issues, and that's one of the reasons that I pushed that, uh, from this year's road budget of about forty thousand up to seventy-five. Um, those drainage issues are extensive, it's gonna need to be engineered before we can find a decent solution for it. I'm not even sure that's gonna come close to being enough, honestly. Uh, city planner added to staff, um, this is a, a practical suggestion by, um, council member Kipit, and frankly, I think it's a good one. Our city planner has, is, every year is adding more and more time. Consultants are great, and they're, most of the time they're very cost-effective, but when you get to that point where you can just about pay for an employee, um, and the accountability would be greater to have somebody here in the office versus somebody that I have to get a hold of and may not get to for a few days, um, I think the city planner idea makes sense. So this includes a salary of sixty thousand, uh, and benefits would be about twenty, twenty-one thousand, and the rest of that is just onboarding costs for a new employee. So whatever their computer costs, um, whatever I have to do to outfit their area for them to work. Increases for liability and workers' comp insurance, we don't have any choices on this one, um, that's going up. Um, it's close to eight thousand. And replenishing your fund balance, so as you know, uh, we used a chunk of the fund balance this year for sewer and also to pay cash for a fire truck, so we didn't have to finance one. This is gonna replace about half of what we used this year. So those are just highlights of why we feel that nineteen cent rate is needed.
So we have three things on here I consider to be a must fund. The hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the SAFER grant, we must fund that. The liability and workers' comp of eight thousand, we must fund that. And I really think we must fund those road improvements. I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, but I think that's a must fund as well. Do you guys agree with me on those must funds?
What was the second one?
The liability and workers' comp. We don't, we don't get a, that's a bill that's given to us. It's not like we get to negotiate with that. So this...
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. I'd like to then jump to the do we wanna funds? And I don't wanna talk about the salaries right now, I would like to go to the, um, code enforcement officer. Do we want to have the code enforcement officer become full-time?
See, that's, that's a minimum increase and we get a good return on it, in my mind. I mean, it's fifteen thousand, I don't like, you know, it's fifteen, that's an increase of cost, but the return is, I think it's, it's got value to it. So, and it's minimal, I can do that.
I agree, I think it would be beneficial for the city. We've already seen him clean up the city. Just, just yesterday, I called him at eight o'clock because somebody had dumped a whole load of trash right on two oh five. Well, that was gonna be a safety hazard, and I didn't wanna, or an accident because of that, and he went out there and fixed that immediately. He does a lot more than just code enforcement as well, I mean, as many of our city employees do, but, um, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I definitely, I think he has done a tremendous job since he's been here. I've been very, very happy with his work.
That's a great example, but like, how often do we see that?
Oh, he's, you know, how often, well, he does, that was, that was just an example of me saying...
I guess what I'm asking is, um, right now, is he contracted?
No, he's part-time.
No, he's part-time, but I'm saying he'll be, uh, taking on those extra responsibilities so that we don't have the contract? And then what was the cost on average that we've been paying for that contract? Do you know that right off?
I can find it for you. Our current, the other part of that situation, while I'm looking that up, is a person that's doing it doesn't wanna do it anymore, and she hasn't wanted to do it for some time. There are not a lot of septic inspectors out there.
Okay.
So, um, she also does all the health inspections for Rockwall County, and she is so busy that she really would like to drop part of that. She's continued to do it for us as a favor.
Either way you go, we have to...
Most everyone else in the county has their own, um, their own personnel to do that. But she's continued to do it for us as kind of as a courtesy, because she's always done that.
Does the thirty-one thousand include, like, anything that he, that the city has to contribute or match, like in the retirement plan or anything like that? Does that include the thirty-one thousand?
Um, not the thirty-one, that, the increase in his salary will have a corresponding increase in, you know, his retirement contributions.
So it'll be more than thirty-one thousand?
The thirty-one thousand, uh, line item is for, uh, him to do his job, so take down those buildings if required, uh, his fuel costs.
What line item are we looking at?
And the number, the number that's there, the fifteen-eight, that's all inclusive of everything.
Oh, operating budget.
And the fifteen-eight includes benefits and salary and everything, everything is... And the fifteen eight includes benefits and salary and everything, everything is considered in there.
Yeah, sorry about that, I was on the wrong square. So fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-two does include what the city would have to, if we were to match or contribute to his retirement plan?
Yes. Keep in mind too, that, you know, there are fees that cover some of this, so Kelly Stockburger, you know, we pay her for these septic inspections, but when a new house plan comes in and it's on septic, there's a five hundred dollar fee for that plan review, and then there are inspection fees too. So there are some funds that will come in that, that help pay for this, and they've always helped pay for Kelly's, so it kind of works the same way. We're going to keep those fees on there, and that helps cover some of our costs.
Any other thing on the code enforcement officer? So we're in general consensus that we would like that to stay in the budget as a full-time position?
Yes.
I would.
Okay. All right. The next one is the, to talk about is the city planner. And Lisa pretty much took, took the words that I was going to say about it. We, I have a perfect example of why we need a city planner. I don't know if you all have been following what's going on with the Rockwall and the apartment complex that's going up on the corner of Goliad and Rusk. The planning that we do today is going to affect us in fifteen to twenty years. And I just think it would be very prudent for us to have a full-time planner on staff to work these issues for us, not somebody that we contract out, get him a couple hours to look through a document and give us our opinion, or come to a P and Z meeting. I just think to have someone start to finish that is dedicated to working on McLendon Chism issues in this very, very fluid environment of our city would pay us dividends in the long run. And it would be our go-to person to talk about these kind of things.
I'm not against a city planner full-time. The only thing I see is there's a limitation in how much we're budgeting. Certainly not for increasing, you know, cost for the city. But I, I think that you're offering six, what is it, fifty, sixty thousand dollars and then twenty thousand dollars in benefits. I think you need to cast a bigger net, and I don't think you're going to be able to get somebody to come in for that that has experience and capacities, capabilities to do what we need them to do. I think you're probably looking, and this is just out of the blue, probably seventy-two to ninety-five thousand dollars plus benefits to get somebody who's, who's capable of, of really planning for the future for us. And so I'm not advocating that. I, I'm willing to go with the part-time individual that we have currently, and then start to explore this with a little bit more thought and effort, and revisit this down the line. Does that demand that we, we put money aside now? I don't know, I don't know, you know, monies are fungible. And I know that we're going to be talking about the five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars or eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, whatever it is coming across with that COVID grant. Monies are fungible, that's all I'm going to say, is that I think that there's, there can be allocation in those monies to, and divert those to for a full-time planner. But I don't want to just jump out there and advertise for a planner that we're going to end up getting that we're going to, is not going to be really capable, because we're, we're underpaying the individual.
Really, you just don't hire him?
Well, and I think what happens, I think what happens is you.
You want response to, to an advertisement for somebody that, if you're recruiting, and there are going to be a lot of people that come at, at that point, and, you know, you maybe say, well, this is what the budget is, you really need to increase the budget on this thing to get somebody who is capable of doing the job.
I think what you do is, you do this, you cast the net for the sixty thousand, I've talked to Lisa, I've talked to a couple HR folks, you cast the net at sixty, and if you don't get the takers, or you don't get what you want, you, you have to reevaluate your initial thing, is that right?
You don't know until you try.
We, we can give it a try, I, I do have the same concerns, and I know I've shared that with some of you, that I, I do worry. And to, to Mr. Tucker's point, it, it won't do me any good to have a planner that's fresh out of school. I need a planner that can review a plaque technically, I need somebody that is almost director level, because they don't have anybody else to report to to go ask questions to, so I need somebody that, you know, can come in here and kind of take charge of the situation. I'm here to talk to you, but I'm, you know, there's a reason that we, we outsource for planning. I'm not a planning expert, you know, I don't have the credentials. We really need somebody that has that AICP certification. You can't even get your certification until after you've been doing this for four years, and that's on top of going to school. So it's kind of like an architect or some other, you know, levels of professionals where you have to have a combination of education and experience before you can even sit for the test. But we really need somebody that knows what they're doing, so I'm okay trying at sixty and, and seeing. I know that money is not the main reason for everybody to get a job somewhere, I mean, for some people it is. We might get somebody that maybe is retired and wants to go back at a slower pace, or, you know, a smaller town, we might get lucky. If not, I guess I can come back and I can ask you to amend, and we can, you know, use some of that fund balance that's built in to add another fifteen or twenty, or whatever it is that we might be looking at.
Lisa, do you, do we have a way of, like, asking around what's in our area? In other words, here in McLendon Chism, since we've got so many new people coming in and things like that, is there, would it be feasible to put it out there if anybody is a planner or anything like that? I mean, I'm just saying, use.
We posted on our website, the job availability, we posted on our website, and it's then gets posted on the TML website.
We put it on TML, and we can also put it on the American Planning Association website as well.
You know, I would do that, I would try to hit it here first before you throw it out.
But what's everybody's, Dan sounds like he wants to wait. What do you guys think?
Well, I would say that we put it on the list of what we would, we like, and the most that we really feel we need, like you said, these are musts, and you just keep working it down the line, if that's something that, something we don't have to have, but we would like to have, put it down on the line of, you know, number eight of ten, or whatever. And then if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, and it wasn't something we really needed, or, you know, had to have.
Again, what was the cost for the consultant last year, you know that write-off?
Sixty thousand is what we're projecting at the end of this year.
So is that, so is that, is that like a contract you have with him, is it?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, but it's not like a six-month contract, a year contract?
I think it's, I think it's a year.
Okay, so like, where are we on the contract, as far as the contract you have with him that's in place now?
Well, once it passes a year, it just kind of goes until we give notice, and I think that's thirty days, we're probably at it.
Either way it goes, you're going to spend the money, sixty thousand dollars, so, I mean, I'm okay with trying.
I just think the level of customer service would improve, just having somebody here to talk to instead of Shelley or I trying to get hold of a planner that's not here, and then waiting for that call back. And then also, it's, it's just, it's another step away from the customer, is what it is. I think it just becomes, not just convenience, but better customer service, better accountability to have somebody here in the office.
So I mean, Dan, you sat on P and Z. Would, what would you see the benefit over a part-time guy versus a, a full-time guy?
The benefit of a full-time guy over a part-time?
Yeah.
No, I, you know, I think there's, there's lots of benefit over having a full-time person. I mean, they've got, you know, instant communication with all levels of administration, with counsel. And so I like that, I like that, that, that kind of unity and functioning on the same, you know, time, moment. I'm just looking at cost at this point, and you, you, it's like Trudy said, you have, you're going to have to cut someplace here. If not, you're going to have to maintain the, you know, fight for the nineteen percent. And, you know, where do you make the, the hard decisions? And I think this is just, this is something that we can revisit without difficulty, I think, even with, we don't even have a comprehensive plan in place yet, and I would like to see that, you know, finalized and reviewed and understood completely, that we have a better perspective on where we're going, and if we hire somebody who's capable, and again, I want to increase the, the, the salary and compensation for this individual. I don't want to decrease it, I don't want a part-time individual. I want somebody who's experienced and capable of stepping in there, as Lisa says.
So you're, you're, you're for, for the full-time, cast the net at sixty, see what we get, if we don't get it.
I can compromise that cast in the net, but I just don't want to hire somebody to, you know, just to have somebody in-house on the immediate.
I wouldn't, because it would actually be, it would be more harmful than good. I don't have time to sit and work with somebody, you know, day after day, and, and like I said, I don't have the credentials to be a, a full-time planner myself, so we need to have somebody that does have that experience, otherwise it's not worth hiring.
And you're looking at, I mean, should it have to go, you know, if you do get a guy that's at sixty, you're looking at an added twenty. You're looking at an added twenty.
I know.
For his benefits.
For his benefits and things like, and computer and things like that. So that's what you're really going to be spending above what you're getting as a consultant.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm just, you know, I'm not eager to spend the taxpayers'.
Again, put it down further on the list, again, put it down further on the list, it's not something that, I mean, we, we're, I mean, we're doing okay, I guess, with the one we have now, I mean, it's going to cost you sixty thousand or a thousand, whatever.
Just another twenty.
And it's interesting.
But it's not going to be twenty, that's the thing, it's not going to be twenty, it's going to increase, it's going to be more than that, because you need somebody who's competent. And you're going to be looking at another, another twenty on top of that.
You don't know that until you throw it out there.
I've seen how it works, I, you, you're going to get somebody for five thousand dollars? No, I, no, I want the numbers, and I want it to be factual, and I want to be thoughtful about this, I don't think you're going to get somebody for.
It's not always that way, when you go to get a tire, it's not always the same price that you.
Oh, have an open mind about it, then.
I have a, a question about the procedure for hiring both Mark and a planner full-time. My concern is, we hire them one October, and then we have the rollback, and we can't afford them. Can we hire them one January, once we know if we're going to have a rollback or not?
You can do anything you want.
Because I think that would, I would hate to get someone on staff and then have to potentially let them go.
Yeah, that would be the worst, I would rather have my job as whatever I'm making, then give me a raise and they go, sorry, we're going to have to let you go.
How often have they had rollbacks here?
Well, it's never been as dramatic as this is because of the new tax laws. What Lisa was talking about, you know, probably back in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, council voted to have a percentage of our sales tax go towards our taxes for individuals. Okay, so it's what, twenty-five percent?
Right, so for everything that you collect in sales tax, that increase is, is wonderful, but twenty-five percent of that gets, whatever we add up that taxpayers are going to pay in ad valorem, we actually take twenty-five percent of that sales tax, and we subtract it, and that rate gets adjusted.
So then, in twenty nineteen, the state of Texas went through a tax reform, which cities around the state that do this kind of sales tax reduction are almost penalized, are penalized, because that comes right off the top of their kitty, basically. So.
Excuse the numbers.
Excuse the numbers, so we had a rollback in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, that's as far back as I know. It was one, and it was one eighteen, it was eighteen cents, and it rolled back to fifteen two. And the tax rate has been stable since twenty sixteen. There's been no raise, no raise in taxes since twenty, no raise in the tax rate since twenty sixteen. So, this is still a maybe then. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to, I don't know how to gauge this, guys, I mean.
Well, can, can we seriously get the, get a list going, and you, just like you stated earlier?
Yeah, yeah.
These are musts. Then just throw it down as, you know, one further down on the way, and whatever comes between it. And then as we come to a budget on how much we actually physically have as an income, then we'll know, we can't afford this, we can't afford that, you start from the bottom up.
Let me remind you of the schedule that we're under here too, so this is July twenty-eighth, August eleventh, I'm sorry, August the tenth is when we're going to have the public hearings, and then we'll be voting at the, at a special meeting on the sixteenth.
We're deciding this tonight, we have to decide this tonight.
It's extremely difficult to.
We have to decide this tonight.
To adjust at the day you're adopting it.
If we're going to do this, the city planner, we have to decide it tonight, so that's why.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, as we keep going, you'll see.
So we're going to continue to go through. Yeah, right.
And then we refer back to, okay, we have, you know, a dollar fifty to, yeah.
Okay, so we had, Lisa, you have the twenty K for the strategic plan. We also had other consultants added.
Got Michael.
Right. But I thought we were also going to do the.
Put that way down on the list.
City engineer, accounting services.
Yeah, but didn't we talk about the, doing the study, wasn't the study for the roads in this lump sum too?
Oh, a, a road impact fee?
Yeah. Yes.
I think we took that out. That was taken out.
Line item six three zero zero eight. If you look at six three zero zero eight, we had twenty K for the strategic plan, we had fifty K for the impact fee, and we had ten thousand for the two oh five landscaping study. Plus the twenty-six K that was already in there. We took the water out.
You took the water out, you're right, you took the water out.
So it's actually a hundred and six thousand.
The waters went, went, went away.
Mm-hmm. So under six three zero zero eight, it's twenty K for the strategic plan, and Dan, you were a proponent for doing a strategic plan next year, because we were hot off the comp plan.
Yes.
I had said, no, let's wait and deal with the comp plan, and then see what we get with the, if we want to dive right into the strategic plan. I'm not sure what you, I think Brian wanted to do the strategic plan.
Yeah, I think I was too, because all this been invested in the comp plan, so it already went down that road.
Did I put words in your mouth?
No, 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 I, that's.
So the strategic plan is a fund? We want to fund the strategic plan?
I agree.
And what about the, the road impact fee study? That's fifty K. I'm just segregating out item six three zero zero eight.
I was going to say, is there any possible way where it says consultants, we can have them, what these consultants, who these consultants are? Can we do that, Lisa, like, just ask them, so it, it makes better sense, and it's, it's, you know, more clarity?
Yeah, I think the known ones are in there, so I think your accounting, your engineering, and your legal services are in there.
Yes, we're just.
All of those are in there.
Yeah, this is six three zero zero eight.
Because we didn't know exactly how much they're going to be, because we haven't put it out there yet, and that's just lumped in.
Okay.
Because your strategic plan, I, I put twenty, that, I may have been way under, it may end up being more than that. Or your road impact fee may be less than what I put out there. So for those, we just lump them in to the category.
You need input, you guys.
You put in RFQ, and, and you have to hire them based on qualifications, rather than.
Right.
A little bit around some of those.
Okay, so Lorna, you're asking twenty thousand for strategic plans?
Mm-hmm.
Which is, which is already included in six three zero zero eight?
Yes, yes.
Or it will be added to?
Six, six three zero zero eight has ten thousand dollars for the landscape study for the two oh five expansion. And what that is, is that we need to hire a landscape architect for two-oh-five so we don't just end up with sod.
Okay. Where are you, where are you at on this?
Well, this was just what we discussed.
Oh, like, okay, I was going to say, I don't see where you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, it's just what we've been discussing.
Okay, gotcha.
And then the fifty K, we, Lisa had suggested that we do an impact fee road study because when we have the various developers and builders using our roads, we can charge them a fee to use the roads. But we don't know what that is because we have to do a study.
We charge them a fee based on, you know, their share of what the road improvements would be, so. But I can't just willy-nilly put a price out there and throw it at a developer. It has to be based on a study that's been done. So we can charge impact fees and you'll get your money back eventually on that.
And then twenty K for the strategic plan. And then the remaining twenty-six, I wasn't sure what the other twenty-six for, was for. Because if you add up ten thousand, fifty thousand and twenty thousand, you come up with eighty thousand. And in the budget is a hundred and six thousand.
So what is it that you need? You need some feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm with that. I agree. I think that you got, you're talking about doing a joint session between planning and zoning as well as council because of big developers coming in. I think that should be a part of the process. Simp, I, I agree.
What did we decide the twenty, the extra twenty-six was for then?
Lisa, can I ask you a question about the impact road?
You've got audit in there, too, under professional and legal.
Well, you have the audit separate line. We spent, I think it was just because in twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-six thousand dollars. So I think you just carried it over to the twenty-twenty-two budget.
It could be that we just projected what we need at the end of this year and carried it.
So you all see that?
Yes.
All right, so.
You need to hear from everybody else?
I do, I want to get a consensus.
How did you come up with fifty thousand dollars for the impact road study? I mean, is that, can it be reduced at all? Is there any flexibility in that?
We're going to have to put on a RFQ and I have to, we, we don't have that many public roads. It may come in less.
Yeah.
That's a placeholder.
Yeah, these are just placeholders. This whole budget is just for programming, it's not for execution.
Right.
I think that's actually probably pretty low. I don't expect we get it for less than that.
I'm going to have to go with this. I said, I, I, it's a lot of money. Yeah, I mean, it's warranted, I think all these are warranted. And when she suggests that with the, the fee study, the impact fee study, road study, if we're going to get monies back on that, so there's, there's value that's derived from that and it's much more than the fifteen thousand invested, I'm hopeful getting value out of an investment.
I just think it's time that we, when we have these developers come in and they're using our roads, we're not getting an adequate, we're not getting adequate reimbursement for the wear and tear of what's going on.
Yeah, if, if we're not, then we should be. And if, if, if it demands having a study to set up, set up a fee schedule, then so be it.
You have to have the documentation.
Like to burn on this thing.
Well, it, it's part of, it would become part of when we do subdivision review. It just becomes a fee that we put out there. After the comp plan is done, we may end up with things like park dedication fees and some other fees as well. But for instance, if we've got a development on, say, Pullen Road and that development is so many feet long, with a road impact fee study, somebody will have gone in there and they'll have evaluated the road, what the road needs to be when we redo it because we know it's inadequate at the moment. And it will be inadequate, you know, as more and more traffic comes in there. So they look at ultimately, is that going to be a two-lane with a median? Is that going to be a two-lane without a median? Is it going to be, you know, have a turn lane? So they're going to evaluate the length of that road and what it's going to take to bring it up to a good standard for us. And then, well, usually it's the frontage of the road or it could be acreage-based, depending on, you know, maybe the depth of it. But there'll be a formula that they'll come up with so that we have a very distinct formula on how to charge people. And that's, that ultimately goes into a fund and it can only be used to improve that road. So it may be that we collect funds for a few years before we have collected from enough developers and taxes to redo a road. But it all goes into a fund and it gets dedicated for that purpose.
And I don't like it when it's just the frontage. So if you've got a hundred feet from a gift, you've got four thousand feet behind you, all those people are traveling that.
It could also be based on a number of lots and there's a lot of things that can go into it. But that's why we need an engineer and somebody that does this, we're looking to, to evaluate the best way.
I mean, these are basically, these things that we're funding now are projects that we're going to do this next year. So it gives us a roadmap of where we're.
And support things that's already in the works.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's already resources fixed.
For what it's worth, I think we're behind on a lot of these, you know. I think we've lost out on some funds because we didn't have some of these things in place.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a true believer in making the developers pay for what they care about.
But we have to have our documentation in line to do so. Okay, we're going to keep that in the budget.
Can I ask you a question? How long would it take to do that study? Any thoughts about?
Probably a few months. Probably a few months. We hire a consultant and getting on their schedule. Since we don't have that many roads that are public, I would think it wouldn't take more than a few months.
So is this higher or lower than the city planner?
I think it's higher.
Priority?
Yeah, because that's what Trudy's asked us to do, is to, to do a ladder.
Okay, I got a question real quick.
I think it's higher.
I think it's higher.
Because you're going to make money off of it.
Isn't there like grants that we can get for our roads? I know, Lisa had, I think we had talked about it once before, a couple of meetings ago, but you felt that we're, we make too much money or something like that? I don't remember what the excuse.
Some low-income communities qualify for, for various types of grants, but we're not, we're not going to qualify for anything like that.
Well, can we find out first instead of just saying no?
You won't. It's going to be extremely low-income areas.
Income of.
And since we're such a high, you know, wealthy community.
But can we at least try? How much does it, what does it take to do, to try to get a grant?
You, you, you can't even apply because we won't need the criteria for any of those. They're economic development related and those are to improve the community and they're based on need. Income levels are too high here.
Okay, I had on my sheet a couple other, so I'm keeping that higher than the city planner. City planner right now is at the, at the bottom of the barrel. Okay. So I did this just for my own homework assignment, this, this little sheet of paper here for the audience. It's the PowerPoint slide. I had put in there what I thought were must-funds. And I think they've kind of jived with what we've just, just gone through. The one thing that I think we need to make sure that we put in the budget and we don't alter is the firehouse operating expenses. Because we don't, that's a wedge. We don't know how much it's going to cost to operate the new fire, fire station. But the electricity bill's going to be higher, the water bill's going to be higher. So we have a, a price of five thousand in there. I just wanted people to be aware of that. And then I think the, the other things Lisa had already, already covered. And then we can also determine how much we want to replenish the fund balance. Because if you really think about it, most of the money that we're going to be getting from the taxes, not most of it, sorry, we're going to have a good proportion set for our savings account, which is our fund balance. But we won't go there yet. I think we need to go to the salaries. We need to talk salaries. I really, I personally appreciated some of the comments from the public tonight because I think creating a fee structure like that would be a great idea and something. I don't know if that's something you've talked about, Chief. I mean, I know you have your. Yeah, pay scale. Mm-hmm. Do you have that in place now? But I think that would be, I personally think that would be really a, a great tool. Because you hire somebody, you know, on one October and they're already getting a pay raise, whatever.
Just keep in mind, though, that usually there is somebody that does a study like that to determine that and that's going to cost you. And then you're almost obligated, if that employee performs at a, you know, a reasonable level and they're due for a stop, you're going to have to build that into your budget every year.
But then as one of the citizens was saying.
I'm not against it. I think it's a great idea, it's, I didn't think we were there yet.
I, I believe increases should be structured, as Mr. Dahl said or Jody said. The anticipation, if you increase by eight percent this year, the anticipation is anything less next year or the year beyond, you may have a disgruntled employee on hand.
I see what you're saying. I think the public's going to see it as a raise.
It is, I mean, it is really.
We're trying to adjust the salaries, the proposal, well, it's your proposal, I'll let you speak. I'm sorry.
Listen, I'm the captain of this ship, I will sink with it. But I did hear two citizens' comments today. And I think that they both presented something, I think we can abstract from it, both the reality of where we are financially, the commitment to increase the salary. What if we did do as one citizen suggested and put it as a bonus structure? I don't know if that's possible, what that looked like for this next year. Allow us the opportunity to get through this. I do believe that raising the taxes nineteen cents is what we need to do. That would allow us the opportunity to get to May and we can even structure it as one of the citizens have. You need to say something?
Oh, I was going to, yeah.
Okay. So we can even structure it as one of the citizens had suggested to whereas, maybe one is three months from now or six months from now, that'll allow us maybe to pay out of a bonus, whatever percentage we agree, rather than a pay raise, a bonus structure for that percentage. It'll allow us the opportunity to see what happened in May with the voting. And then it'll allow us then be able to prepare for the next budget. But it does not lock us into that pay raise, but still be able to acknowledge the pay issue.
All that, all that was just fine, except for one thing, we can't do bonuses. Because bonuses, they've got to be attached to something, to some identifiable factor that they earned X, Y, Z. So, you know, maybe if you've got, you know, a contract employee, like, under a contract and you, certain performance standards that you reach, you get X, Y, Z. It wouldn't be considered a bonus because they would have earned it. A bonus is just, oh, you've been here for five years, we're going to add another hundred dollars a month. We, we can't do that because that's Article Three, Section Fifty-Two situation where we can't give something without getting something in return.
So to just propose the question, what about for the firefighters, since we are getting the coronavirus recovery funds, can we structure a bonus of sorts? I know the word, it's not, it's pretty much called a bonus in those funds, in that, in that briefing, for the firefighters at that point instead of in the regular budget?
I, I would never recommend using one-time funds for ongoing expenses.
But if it's not an ongoing expense, if it's a, a bonus related directly to the coronavirus relief fund. So the coronavirus local recovery fund, which we're going to talk about soon, can apply for first responders, is pay. And I forget the, I have a, I don't have that little piece of paper in front of me, but it's not an incentive pay. It's like a, it's a pay for the work that they have done during COVID-19. And our firefighters have done a lot of work during COVID-19 in, in those efforts. Could we put that, could we give them funds through that program versus through our, giving them a raise?
That would be, I'm okay with that if you're very specific in, because I see what you're saying, it's not, because I, I agree with Lisa. But it's not ongoing, it is, that is very, that is tied to normally past consideration or past action. We won't support a contract agreement. But these funds were specific for what people have already done in COVID, the overtime they worked, the extra effort, the extra, you know, risks that they undertook, et cetera. That is exactly what these funds are for. So I would be, from a legal, now, fiscally, whether y'all want to do that, that's all, but from a legal standpoint, I wouldn't necessarily.
It's called premium pay.
It's still not fixing the, the deficit if you're giving a one-time bonus of, say, two thousand dollars. You're not fixing that deficit.
It's not fixed, I agree with.
But it would give you, it would give you time in the.
Safer ground.
It would give you time in the year to formulate your, your program.
I think, I think more importantly, I agree, it doesn't fix it, but it do acknowledge, make an acknowledgement based on the reality of, we don't know what's going to happen in May. And if there is a situation to whereas it do go to the poll and we do get backtracked to thirteen point three, then we don't have to let anyone go. So I agree, it don't fix it, but it is an acknowledgement of it until we see where we are so that we can be able to scale and build moving forward.
I, I'd like to say something. Michael, you may want to chime in on this because you can probably slide chapter and verse. But these are federal funds and they don't take into account our local or state laws so much. That, you know, they're giving them out to Texas and then Texas is going to funnel them down to us. Texas has a law that says, once you've paid a, a police officer or firefighter, you cannot lower their pay again. So I can't, I can't take their pay back. So once you give this, I, I really think you're going to be, it's going to be a permanent thing. It's not really going to be a bonus or a one-time thing. Because I don't think Texas law is going to allow you to take it back.
Are you sure?
That went into effect a couple of years ago.
But it may be different with this, this fund, this specific fund.
And that's, and that's actually a good point, and I, because I understand the concern. So I can look at that because you're right, federal, the federal law, even if that's what Texas, and I'm not saying you're wrong, but I'm just saying, assuming that's the law, federal law is going to preempt that. It's going to trump it.
Federal law is going to trumpet.
You can use, that doesn't automatically mean that that's going to be considered. But it's a very good point and I think absolutely worth looking into. Just to make sure that, because these funds, you're limited, you can't just use them for anything.
Right.
And you've got, and you've got to have very detailed accounting of what you're going to, they almost have their own budget, if you will, and accounting that you're going to have to give, was it August twenty-twenty-six, I think? So we have, as long as we're using the funds for that, it will be, how do those funds, using it according to the federal law, ratify, commiserate with, work with, commune with Texas law, not being, because Lisa's right. You can't go, it's. You can't go, it's considered, you know, either demotion, or reduction of responsibilities, or things like that. It's considered potentially impactful on that. So, yeah, you want to make sure that using those funds isn't going to impact actually. My gut feeling is that no, that it won't, because these federal funds are very specific in their nature and what they're for, be their limited uses. It would be, seem to be difficult to then say, hey, you know what? Texas law is going to trump all the whole purpose of these federal funds. So, that's my, my bet. It seems, but it's absolutely a good question to work with. So, I don't, I don't disagree with her at all.
My other concern is, although we are supposed to get the money, I haven't seen it yet.
Yep.
And I'll believe it when it's deposited in the bank.
So, you've made, you've made the application for it, gone through the process?
I put in the preliminary, well, I'm putting it in this week. It'll be in, finished before the end, before Friday. But at this point, all we have to do is put in our intention to accept the funds. And so, that's all we're doing right now. We don't have to decide today, when we get to that item on the agenda. I'm not asking you to decide today how you want to use those funds when we do get them. I did provide you with a handout, and on the backside, it gives some examples of the uses of those funds. My suggestion would be, you know, water and sewer infrastructure type projects that are going to be one-time expenses, because these is a one-time chunk of funds. If you want us to try to figure out how to pay on these initial workers, we'll try. My fear is that we'll put in for it, and we'll pay them, and they'll kick it back to us, and there'll be another string attached that we didn't meet some kind of guideline for. Or that, that Texas law that says you can't take pay back for, you could, you could take mine back, but you can't take his back. Just as a firefighter or a police officer, you can't, you can't roll their pay back.
And that would be the question, whether it's considered. Remember, one thing I do when I'm assessing the situation, is before I even get into a long discussion about whatever it is, does it fit the definition?
Well, that's something you can look at in the next, you know, between now and August tenth, when we have further discussion about it. But for council, we need to, we need to put something in the budget tonight on if we're going to do the pay adjustment. And is it going to be the eight percent as it is now, or is it going to be something lower? And then we can always take it out. We don't have, if we get the funds and we decide, and it's, if we get the coronavirus funds and it's a legal way to do it, we can, we don't have to do that funding.
So, do you want, you want a hard number? You know, I was looking at, at attaching increase to the rate of inflation. And so, obviously, the rate of inflation, I think the, it came out, it was five point four, something like that. But I was also reading this past week where, over the period, the year, it'll probably reduce down to about two point one to two five now. Those, you know, those are just numbers. But, you know, I, I, you have to hang your hat on something. And so, in that regard, I would be looking at something around rate of inflation. I'm going to say three, and then maybe between four and five for an increase, maybe four, two, five. Somewhere in that vicinity, but I'm not looking at eight percent.
Yeah, I don't think I'm ready to go to eight percent either.
It's just, it, you know, there's taxpayers who've got to pay that. And eight percent jump, and I understand the chief's desire to, to increase salaries so that we're competitive with the remaining departments around the vicinity. You know, when I was in business, I lost valued employees, because they decided they were going to go elsewhere. And guess what? I always replaced them with somebody who was of equal capability or better. It's just a question of looking and finding them. So, I'm not adverse to an increase in salary. But eight percent, I'm not ready to make that jump at this point.
Sure.
Chief didn't make the request for eight percent.
Oh, yeah.
At all. So, it's not, I'm, we're going to support whatever, because the council is the whole of the side. You know, every little bit does count, you know, because, like you said, a place like that. Eight percent, yeah, we'll be back to the street. But I just want to make sure that everybody knows, and that eight percent, what it puts on about me and the chief.
Well, yeah, that's, that's good. That's a matter of record, we know that.
We brought up a few points tonight. The city planner situation. We're already sixty thousand dollars in on that, okay? To bring someone on, if we can get someone on for that sixty thousand, we'll increase twenty-five thousand. What if we split the baby at four percent? The eight percent increase is showing here thirty-two, nine eighty-four. What if we kept the consultant with the city planner, save that twenty-five thousand, split the baby on the raises at four percent? That's only a sixteen thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollar impact. Opposed to, if we did go for with the city planner, that would have been a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. So, we can save thirty-two and.
I get what you're saying.
Twenty-five, that's fifty-seven thousand dollars where we can.
If it, if it helps any, and I'm just trying to offer this there, a lot of cities our size that I've worked with, now, it's not big, but they actually have a planning department, not just a planner, but a planning department of like three or four people. So, I mean, Lisa's already told the virtues of a planner, and I can certainly attest that it's very normal for cities our size to at least have, at least have a plan. And it does make it easier to get things done, and to get to you all, what you do have.
I do agree with that, but for the purpose of process of elimination, in terms of what's needed, what's necessary, not knowing what May is going to look like, I think that's somewhere where we can put off ten more months. Once we get the outlook on that, we can always, as been stated all night, revisit it.
The planner?
The planner.
Well, we can revisit that. We can put the planner in the budget and not hire that planner until January, because we will know.
Or May, once we know.
Or, well, we'll know, if, if the, if there's no petition filed, then we can go ahead and hire. It's only if it goes on the ballot, and we'll know if it's going to be on the ballot within ninety days. Because they, whoever is filing that petition has ninety days, I do believe, to get that to city council. So, we're going to know by the end of the year if it's going to be a ballot issue. And if we don't hire anyone until after we know it's going to be on the ballot or not.
Okay.
You got it?
Yeah, I got you. So, again, just to reiterate.
I personally like your idea.
To reiterate the point, we would have been an additional twenty-five thousand in hiring that planner at sixty thousand dollars. If we split the baby on the increases at four percent, in lieu of thirty-two, nine eighty-four, that's sixteen fourteen, sixteen four ninety-two. We've just opened up forty, fifty thousand dollars right there. And as you say it, once we see what this looked like in terms of the reaction, we can always revisit that based on how we are. But I am standing on the table for nineteen cents, I'm sorry. I just feel like the revenue that we generated in building permits would be no longer, and we really have to retain that.
We, we have, the only growth in the city we have is Sonoma Verde, right now.
Which is at a halt.
Which is at a halt.
They're only taking five contracts per building right now.
Okay, so, let me ask a couple of questions, and I'm sure it's in my paperwork somewhere, but just. So, if a nineteen percent, I mean nineteen cent raise, I mean, sorry, nineteen.
Tax rate.
Tax rate, thank you. Brings us how much a, a year?
Based on the latest.
You mean?
In other words, so, we go up to nineteen cents, so you buy.
How much revenue would they generate in the fund balance?
In the fund balance, or?
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at is, if we raise our taxes up to nineteen cents, how much from what it is at fifteen, that it is now, is that? Fifteen to nineteen.
I'll tell you in just one second.
Yeah, it's in here somewhere, I just don't know.
Sam?
Okay, so, the nineteen brings in one million. And this year, we budgeted was. Like, five hundred and fifty-one was what was budgeted for fifteen.
So, I guess what I'm asking is the difference of fifteen cents to nineteen cents is?
Oh, every cent was fifty-three thousand, so four, four times fifty-three.
So, projection was fifteen cents.
Is that what you asked?
Total tax, you're looking at, you're asking for total tax revenue?
What I'm trying to get at is, if we ask the citizens to go to nineteen cents, of that nineteen cents, okay, so let me ask this. How much is the raises of being four percent across the board? What would that be?
Sixteen, four ninety, sixteen thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars.
Okay, so now, what you are asking.
Which is a half a percent of all of the projected revenue.
Understand. But what you are asking is the citizens to go up in taxes to pay, I don't know how many citizens we, I mean, not how many people we have, but you're asking them to pay almost sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. But we still need roads. We still, they're going, they're going to say, we need that money to go towards the things that we need.
So, that generated, I think it was four hundred thousand dollars of revenue by going up to nineteen cents. So, we got four hundred thousand dollars in revenue, and we do across the board, four cent, I mean, four percent, that's only sixteen thousand dollars. So, you still got three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but what I'm saying now, is because you've now asked people that have, that have called and complained about their roads, and about just things that are not, they're not happy with. But you're willing to give that money that you're asking them to go up in to staff. And I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, but we just, we just funded a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for roads. Plus, we have another four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in the fund balance that if we need to direct to do road maintenance, we, we can, with that nineteen cent tax rate.
Okay, okay, so, just hear me out for a second. Just hear me out. So, you're asking them to do the, take, go up in taxes, they're going to pay a little more, which is all going to go toward, the sixteen thousand is going to go towards staff.
Part of that. One percent of that, of that increase, the taxes will go, one percent, sorry, it's half a percent of the, of the projected revenue will go towards that rate, those raises. One half of a percent.
Okay, now, let's say they do the rollback, and now we're at thirteen cents.
We aren't going to employ those, we aren't going to employ those raises until we know there's not a rollback.
And you think everybody's going to understand that.
So, I could just state it, though, I think you suggested twenty-one cents.
Yeah.
We're, it's on the table, nineteen cents. Either way, go in, why?
Again, would, if you come at them by stating, here's why we need this much money.
I don't think we're going to state it.
They will understand.
I think what we're going to state is, we need this money in increase in taxes, because thirty-eight percent of our revenue has been by way of building permits, which is now gone in comparison to the last twelve months, forecast the next twelve months. That's the conversation that's going to be had, the fact we have to replace that income.
And you're going to, but here's the thing, too, is part of that, that income, or that part of that money that they are having to pay more for now, is going towards people's salaries, when some of those people didn't get a raise at all, in their own personal. Do you, do you understand where I'm going with this?
It's not that I don't understand where you're going. I guess I just want to illuminate, we, I think we have the responsibility to.
You have a responsibility, I understand that. But you don't have the money for it. You just don't. At thirteen cents, if they roll it back, or anything like that, you're not going to have it. And once you give it, you can't take it back.
So, so as Lorna just proposed, once we see what the implications of this is, we're able to move forward with that.
If, if we go to the thirteen cents, we're going to be sitting in here.
Yeah.
Frantically trying to find money.
We'll be slashing everything here.
But if we don't give that money to them until after the rollback is either happened or not.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, I want you to be clear. What are you proposing? Are you proposing to not go to nineteen percent? I mean, nineteen cents? Or are you proposing to not do any raise?
No raises at all. And the, and the reason I'm saying that, the reason I am saying that, and I understand that you're not happy. I'm not happy either. My husband didn't get a raise. So, I'm really sorry, but there are going to be people out there that have not only lost their jobs, you're now giving, making them go up in, in taxes. Let's say they, they do take the tax, and they go, yeah, we'll do it, but, but here's the thing, I don't want to have to give some of that tax that I'm having to pay to, to, to staff.
But people are our most important resource.
Okay.
Yeah, I disagree.
Y'all do what you need to do, I'm done. You know how I feel about it. You know what my thoughts are. I, I think you guys are opening up a can of worms on something that we can wait another year. Wait another year and see what the heck happens. We don't even know what's going to happen to the fire department. We haven't even opened the doors on that thing yet.
It's so contrary to what you were saying, how you wanted the taxes to be at twenty-one cents. So, where do you want to spend that money?
Because I was hoping that we could meet in the middle and go to nineteen. If you go a little higher, we can come back down and be happy with nineteen. They would be happy with nineteen. Or at least I would be having a hopefulness of a conversation that they could understand that I was looking at twenty-one, but if we can meet in the middle at nineteen, that's awesome. But don't make them give away some of the money that you're making them have to pay extra for, for something that they didn't even get. Does that make sense?
That's a no.
Okay, so, in other words, if you don't get a raise, but you're willing to give somebody else a raise, and you don't have a job, but you're, but I'm asking you to give more money to somebody else, you're going to be okay with that. And I want you to truly answer that.
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, I do.
Okay. If I don't get a raise.
Or you don't have a job, that you've gotten fired, because there are people out there that truly have, that no longer have a job.
I'm trying to answer your question, as you presented it, to me, it's kind of comparing apples to oranges. First of all, if I'm in a situation where I did not get a raise, I think there's one argument. But I think the thing that we're trying to adjust, I mean, address, is, did I not get a raise because there was no money available to raise? In terms of, am I underpaid? And just this year, is it even key to a year? Or is this a situation where I'm making a comparable salary, and I can stand to not get a raise this year? It's not that I'm not understanding what you're saying, or not hearing where you're coming from, but I'm trying to acknowledge the other angle of it, too. And I believe somewhere in the middle is the compromise.
Well, I, I personally think that sometimes you have to take a year off. Just because you've been, we've been all doing really well. We all could sell our houses probably for three times more than we can pay for. I get that. It's not always going to be that way. There's going to be a day that you're going to wait one day too late to sell your house. And you're going to be not happy. You're not going to be, you're not going to be able to afford the things that you've always been able to. And then, not only that, but if we give them the raise, just like they stated, we can't take it back. You can't, you can't go down. You cannot go down. You can't, you can't go down, you cannot go down. But, oh, you know, it's, it's okay, we disagree, I, I mean, I get that. But I need you guys to understand and to truly think about not just yourselves and your predicament at your home, but you need to think about the economy and the way that things have been just this weird year. Take a year off, it's okay, take a year off. Because as you see, we're trying to cut budgets on things and you're asking people to give more money to something that they're really, they personally will not be getting anything out of.
Well, that's where I really disagree with you. I hundred percent disagree with you there. Because we're getting, we're giving them a staff, though...
They're not going to see it that way, and you know that.
And to, and to, and to your point, what you just proposed was you have to consider someone else. I believe that's what we're attempting to do. Nineteen cents on average again was twenty-four dollars a month out of a half million dollar evaluation of a home. But what we're not considering in that statement, considering someone else is, what a four percent raise due to their household? When they, their pay is compromised on the scale that it's in? So, yeah, we're asking someone to give us twenty-four more dollars a month. But this is what it do, that is a part of it. And I believe if you do what you just said, consider someone else and not just yourself, I believe that's a valid statement that I'm proposing and why.
You know, it was, the point I was trying to make earlier was, you know, defended the, the increase based on cost of inflation, I think that's, that's a pretty rational approach. And then beyond that, just to incentivize people to stay, and it's a very small increase, it would have been like a percentage and a half or less, to incentivize people to stay in the position that they're at. I mean, this is a new department and a lot of the funds that we're dedicating to salaries come out of the, the fire department. And, you know, retaining staff, and I've had conversations with the chief and Lisa, you know, you get an experienced cohesive unit working together and you get maximum value out of those folks. And there's a cost, there's a cost of doing business, and the cost in part here, though it's not a business concern, you envision it as such, and that's how I look at things here, is that, you know, a modest increase in, in salary is, you know, you get the payback later, you get the value out of that, and to provide nothing, you know, not even cost of inflation. This is affluent committee.
The cost of inflation is weird for this year. Just like you, no, just like you stated, you, they're saying that right now, if you look it up on the internet, it's at five point four, whatever. But it's supposed to go back down at two point five or whatever the numbers were. Again, this is a weird year, it's just a weird year. You go ahead and, and do your budget off of a weird year? Next year, you think this year's bad, wait till next year?
Well, that's why I'm pulling back from eight percent to four percent. And, and so, and next year will take care of itself, and we will be looking at a different pers, with a different perspective. Next year, and we're going to go with four percent, maybe not, you know, it may be three percent, maybe two percent, who knows?
Remember, you and I had a discussion and you said, hit the pavement, go ask the people what they want. Now might be your time to go ask them what they feel. If we had to raise taxes and you're giving them whatever number you guys decide, go door to door, hit the pavement, just like you said, that you were, you thought that we all needed to do, hit the pavement and you go get your consensus, and then you'll know. And, and I'm praying that I'm so wrong, I do, I pray that, that things are going to be better and that I have just a very distorted look on how things are right now. I'm praying that that's the way it is. But don't, don't, don't just rely on me being, trying to be devil's advocate and trying to talk for those that are, you know, that I think about. Go ask, get out there and go ask.
I'll ask, I will take you up on that, but what I will also do is educate.
Yeah, oh, no, absolutely.
And, and, and again, and again, I think if you just ask someone how they feel about that blanket statement, they will respond to that blanket statement. But once you lay down the facts of what is on the table right now, we take the time to educate people whether it be town halls, knocking on doors, or whatever, I think that is a part of what is going to bring it about.
And I agree with that because education, not just asking such as the CPAC that I'm very upset about, but they're not, it's not a yes or no answer. You do need to educate these people, you do need to educate them on the things that we are having to decide on. That survey was a major disappointment for me in certain points, on certain points. Because they, it doesn't, it doesn't help me understand what decisions I need to make because everything was a yes or no question. And so therefore, I do completely agree with you, education is huge because it helps people make a, a right decision, not a, I'll cry if I would have known that decision. So...
Well, back to being the administrator that I am here right now. In the budget, we have to set a number or not, and what is that number going to be? And now, this is again a programming number, it's not necessarily what, what happens. I mean, it usually does, but it's not necessarily what happens. I totally think we shouldn't expend any funds until we know about the rollback as far as personnel costs. I, I would, I would like the four percent myself.
I think that's responsible.
So we noticed three, three yes, one no. And then when it comes to the next meeting, we'll hear what citizens have to say and we'll... This is a very, this will be a visible item for the civilians, sorry, citizens, but it's rather small in comparison to the other things that we're doing to the budget that are way more expensive. So I hope that they don't just glob onto the fact that we're adjusting salaries, but look at the bigger picture too.
But again, I think that we need to explain, I mean, just to be on both sides, explain to them why that money is needed, explain to them why the tax rate needs to be at nineteen cents. Explain to them, give them all of the reasons why. If you don't give them reasons such as education like you just stated, then you're not...
And that's up to the four of us.
So somebody needs to make a list.
Well, that's up to the four of us to become prepared for the next meeting with your, with your information, with your, with your responses. That's your responsibility as a council member to be prepared to adequately and accurately discuss why you believe the budget should be where it is.
I agree with you. No, I'm committed to it, and I don't fear the backlash. I, I just think that at some point, we just have, someone have to be bold enough to just, you know, go against the grain and because the, the effect, the effects of us not going against the tide right now, we can't continue to not do it. I mean, just the reality of, you know, the revenue and how offset it's going to be over the next twelve months is do or die, sink or swim, either way go, but...
You know, just, just as an aside, is that, you know, this is, this is, came to the conclusion of a four percent, it's a very subjective decision. And, you know, I'm just going to say that in the future, I think we need an agenda item, an exploration of, of different means of paying for salaries. And I think what Jody presented and what Mr. Dahl presented, just absolutely great, you know, thought. I mean, we need to structure this so that, you can structure it, I, I think, such that you can have a high level of prediction of how much it's going to cost you on a yearly basis, rather than start pushing numbers around whether it's zero, four percent, or eight percent. You know, I think we can do better than that, I think we need factual information about scheduling, you know, all the things that Jody really referred to, and that's, that's beyond my realm. But I can see that you can quantitate these things, you can, it can be much more predictive and, and you can, you can, you know, come in here and minimize the discourse that we've gone through. And it's nice to thrash it out, but at the end, we could have spent our time on something else much, much more important.
What are your thoughts of, of maybe just a consult with Jody or whomever's HR, an HR person that has that?
That level of expertise.
Yeah, the education of that and that way...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know personally how to formalize that, if we would have to, if there would be compensation involved with that or how you would do it, that would be for Lisa, I think, to maybe advise us on. But I think we need to look at formalizing a, a pay schedule.
And it sounded like Chief has been wanting to do that, and, but as Lisa said earlier, it's going to cost us money to do that, but I think it will be more efficient and less subjective.
Yes, and in the long term...
As Will said, okay, I knew every two years I was going to get a, I was going to get a raise because of that. I mean, I got a cost of living raise too, and this is, basically this four percent is going to end up being a cost of living raise for them.
So there was no question in terms of what you were anticipating?
But I knew that, yeah, and it was published, and I, I think that is a future agenda item to revamp our, our pay structure.
No, that's what I would like to see.
Does anyone have any other line items in the budget that they would like to discuss? I know you had some questions, Trudy, when you and I were talking about income.
On what again, I'm sorry?
The budget, do you have any more questions?
Um, I wrote them all down, but I think a lot of them, some of them weren't actually answered. Okay, I have, well, no.
Do you want to ask them offline separately to Lisa?
Well, some of them, no, I'm good. I mean, some of them are just trying to understand some of the things that Jody and Will had said. But, no, I'm good.
So for clarity, would I propose the four percent? Are we packaging that with not the city planner? Or are we just putting it off to see what the implications would be to know if we're still going to go forward with the city planner? That's a twenty-five thousand dollar play there in terms of...
I, I thought you were saying we were going to do this, that you had suggested since we were saving money in those, with that extra four percent.
I was, but I'm trying to see what the consensus is about.
That's like the last big item, are we going to fund the city planner or not?
Yeah.
And again, don't hire them until we know what the situation is.
That's the safety valve for me, is you don't hire them until we, we know for sure.
Yeah, because you don't want to let go of somebody because you didn't have the money eventually or whatever. Okay, I, I do have a couple of things on here, Lisa.
We didn't wait, can we go back to answering that question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay with it.
Hiring the city planner.
Okay.
Okay, it's a wedge in the budget, we're keeping it in.
Can we look at, who else do we have? The engineer and the inspector and Mr. Hala, and who else do we have that are, that are contracts that are up? Because I think now is the time that we did that last year.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that, well, once we adopt the budget, then the next agenda items would be if we're going to do any advertisements for those positions.
Because wouldn't that be included in the budget, I mean, like if we had to hire somebody and it was going to go up or...
I don't know, which do we do first, Lisa?
I, I think you probably have the consultants that work the cheapest that I've ever seen, and I think you're going to risk burning them off, but if you want to... Some, some of these people can't be hired based on low budget, they have to be hired based on qualifications. We can do whatever you want to do. But if I, if I send it out there and say, hey, we're going to look, we're going to go shop and you want to send me a lower bid, I think you're going to lose people.
But, so I would like to suggest we keep it in the budget as it is?
IT was...
And then discuss it later?
So I think what I heard earlier was we would placeholder it in the budget, wait to see the implications of this, then we could proceed to look at, because it's a twenty-five thousand dollar difference, if we just keep a consultant, we will bring in somebody on because of the benefits cost. So you're saying keep it in the budget as a placeholder until we see what happened? Or you're saying just go ahead and what is that?
Well, I know I'm saying just go ahead, but I'm, I'm not sure that's what everybody wants to do.
Just wanted to clarify, I'm going to say, let's go ahead with it.
Yeah, we're going ahead, keeping the planner in.
We're going to keep the planner instead of...
The only change is moving to four percent on the raises.
That's all the only change that we've made so far.
So we're, I'm sorry, we're going to keep the planner that we have now or...
No.
Okay.
Full time. Yeah, so the only thing we've changed in the last hour has been the eight percent to the four percent.
That's a sixteen thousand dollar savings.
Wow.
Okay, Lisa, can you, can you tell...
Yeah, that's pretty mighty.
It's a two million dollar budget.
Can you tell me on three eleven, the PIT administrative, or administer expense reimbursement? It was forty-three and then eight thousand and now nothing, can we tell me what that was, that was and where did it go?
Well, the PIT items are going to change a little bit depending on if bonds were issued one year or not. This year, we actually, it's under miscellaneous and there was a, as part of that bond issuance, the city received a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so, so instead of putting it under the PIT administration, you put it under miscellaneous?
Well, because it wasn't a direct reimbursement, it was just an agreed upon amount of this. That one was actually written in the development agreement. Some of these though, if, if there is a direct expense, the city occurs, we can charge the PIT.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused because I thought the safer grant was the hundred and eighteen thousand on three fifteen. I thought you said that that was the safer grant.
No, that, that's a revenue item and that one was received from the bond issuance. I think two percent of the bond funds, whatever the amount was, is what the city was supposed to receive when a bond was issued for, for the PIT.
Okay, can we from, I mean, can we ask the accountant to where it says, like, anything that's miscellaneous, whatever, or something that's of, like, just consultants? He lists them out, I mean, so it's, it's easier for us to understand. I mean, it's a little more...
You're looking for greater definition for some of these articles.
Yeah, I am definitely looking for it.
I had asked about this before.
Yeah, it's like you're just going to keep getting the same questions. If he would just itemize them out, that would be great. So just as a clarification, the building permits are eight hundred and eight thousand and the ad valorem is one point three or one point oh three. If the market decides to not be as generous, because that's what we're living on, basically. So if it, if the market decides to take a downhill spiral, that's why you need fund balance. So you can survive a year if things go south. How long do you think, I don't know, I'm good.
Norman, do you have any further questions about the budget?
No.
Mr. Tucker? Okay, so, what we need to do is we aren't, right now, we've taken sixteen thousand dollars out of the budget. We're not adopting the budget tonight, we're not setting the tax rate tonight. That'll be the tenth, when we have, or sorry, the six, the sixteenth. So what I need is for someone to make a motion that we adopt, or sorry, I need somebody to make a motion to reschedule the public hearing... to make a motion to reschedule the public hearing from August 11th to August 10th. Could someone please do that?
From August 11th.
To August 10th, because we're going to be changing our meetings back to Tuesdays. So the 11th is a Wednesday. We need to have our public hearing rescheduled from August 11th to August 10th, but I need a motion for that.
Make a motion to reschedule a public hearing for the budget from the 11th of August to the 10th of August.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And the tax rate hearing?
And the tax rate hearing, thank you.
And what time?
It'll be at 6:30.
6:30.
Do I have any other further discussion? Take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passed unanimously. Okay, let's see, do we need to do anything else for that item? 6.1, I think we're good.
The only action was rescheduling.
Yeah, okay. So when you come back to the next meeting, we will have the public here to talk about both the tax rate and the budget. So at that point is when we'll be prepared to answer questions and explain why we did what we did. Okay, item 6.2, discussion regarding status of coronavirus, local fiscal recovery funds, allocation of funds for the city of McLennan Chisholm, ineligible and ineligible costs and related matters. This is an informational briefing presented by Lisa.
So I did provide you a handout. The city allocation is $856,100. So that's supposed to come to us in two chunks. So one would be $428,000 in 2021 and 12 months after that in 2022, the remainder of $428,000. So this covers costs obligated between March 3rd of '21 and December 31st of '24. So there is no rush to decide on how you want to spend those funds. At this point, all I've done is, is put in that we would like to, we'd like to have our fund, we want our share. Funds must be used by December 31st, 2026. So you've got your sheet there of eligible costs. The detail sheets are hundreds of pages long. And I think there's going to be a lot of back and forth and discussion and discrepancies over what's really a covered expense and what's not a covered expense in the coming months. So eligible costs, you know, broadly, they are saying premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work in addition to the regular wages. And then one that I think probably makes sense for us is infrastructure investments in water, sewer and/or broadband. So water, sewer or broadband, any of those would actually be beneficial for our city. But, you know, preliminary studies on water, you know, feasibility for whether we want to think about taking over water and becoming a provider or not, those are all things that that money could be used for. It's not going to buy you infrastructure. You know, that's going to be a bond to buy infrastructure. But it could pay for sewer line extension, it could pay for some of the engineering costs, the free, the free costs for large projects. But like I said, there's no, there's no action here tonight. This is just to kind of inform you. I didn't put these funds in the budget because I haven't seen them yet. We can amend the budget when it happens, if it happens. I read a little blip today, whether or not it's accurate news, who knows anymore? I can never figure it out until it happens. But someone said now that, you know, these, these funds get funneled from the feds down to Texas and then Texas will issue them to their local governments. And I read today that they were actually going to hold them until fall, have a special session and talk about releasing them. So I don't know that we'll get them before the end of this fiscal year anyway.
Would it be something we could, so some ideas, extend the commercial sewer? If we need to do any sewer upgrades at Sonoma Verde, we could, we could do that, right? With, if we need any repairs for the list?
You can use them for, it sounds like on infrastructure, it's fairly broad as far as the use. That seems to be the broadest one out there. But any infrastructure investments in water, sewer or broadband. I know on our city surveys and the comp plan that, you know, internet service is something that a lot of people had complained was inadequate and that we didn't have enough of. I'm having that in my own neighborhood in Rockwall in fact, but.
So I know that this money has to be used for something specific, so could it be a revenue generator by extending sewers' lines and then charging it back to future developments? And then we could then use that money at our leisure?
We can't.
Can you do that?
Use it and you put it back in the utility fund.
Okay.
You don't want to put it in your general fund, that whatever revenue would be gained, you'd want to put it in your utility fund.
But would we be able to charge them a TAP fee since we didn't have to pay for it? We could also use it to buy PPE for the fire department if we needed to too. That's one of the reasons, if he needed any equipment, that's something in, that we can use it for.
Do you, do you have a, like a detailed summary, no, actually just a detailed explanation as to the eligible cost that you can apply this to?
It's in that, it was in our read ahead that if you go to that briefing, the PowerPoint slide.
Okay.
The PowerPoint slide has a little, one of those scan things and you can scan and it's the whole document, it's 42 pages.
Okay, so all, all, all the areas that we can apply these monies to are well defined?
Well.
Well, I don't know if I call them well defined, but.
Yeah, like, like even though roads are infrastructure, you can't improve roads unless, unless you're doing sewer and water repairs that disrupt those roads, then you can use it for road repair.
Okay, so if I go to that site, then I'll be able to get that?
Yeah, it's in that briefing.
The briefing has links to various documents.
Yeah, you can use it for road repairs and upgrades that occur with an eligible water or sewer project.
On a water project, not flood or water issue.
No, because that'd be a whole fee, that'd be a whole other fund source. So I guess you're just going to keep us in the loop.
I'll keep you in the loop. You know, the forms I'm filling right now are the direct deposit form and just signing off and saying, you know, who's going to be responsible for communicating back and forth and just kind of your general federal forms. We're already registered with SAM, that's who if you get a federal grant, you have to be registered with. We've already done that because we get a grant for hard butter pay under the SAFER grant. So some of that stuff is already done for us. So this one, all it is, is really just me putting in and saying, we intend to accept the funds and we will find a good use for it. There's, you don't have to define it right now to accept the funds. You can accept the funds, you can put them into an account, just don't spend them on anything. And then when we do spend them, we have to account for what we spent them on.
Any more questions about that? Okay, item number 7.1, council will receive an update from staff regarding the recently completed Sonoma Verde Phase 1 road repairs.
So someone on council, I think it was council member Willis, asked me to check into, after the last road repairs of, and if I got the person wrong, I apologize, about looking to see if maybe we should sample the rest of the roads to see if maybe we need to look at, you know, other improvements. So I had the engineer, I'm not, I wouldn't qualify to answer the question, but I had the engineer kind of do a little evaluation. So there is a memo in your packet and it explains why he, what he believes were the causes of the pavement failure and how he thinks it's going to be different in the new phases. And the fact that he believes that core sampling would cause more damage, you know, just the sampling itself. And that he didn't think that we ought to go that route, that actually that that could weaken the pavement and cause, you know, more, more damage rather than just waiting. So there's a full memo in your packet, but basically that's what it is, is that he's not recommending the core sampling.
So have those repairs been done?
They have been done.
Any questions?
No, it's not to say that there aren't more needed, but we, you know, we had to prioritize and that's what we felt like we could do this time. As we get more maintenance funds in, we can look at, you know, a second round. We did get the worst of it. We corrected, I think, 14 areas.
Yes, I did, yeah.
How many more areas remain?
No, no, I definitely don't.
I don't.
And that's why I'm saying we need to find out what the problem is and make sure it doesn't happen again, because the same people that did that.
There are a few, some of them aren't the correct pavement. Some of them are where water pools and there are drainage issues. And so we know we need to either lift it or somehow adjust it. They may not be, they're not going to be as severe as what we've repaired here.
So you guys just prioritize the ones that were most.
The ones that were causing the hazard.
Problematic, okay.
So what were you saying, Trudy?
He had sent me some pictures of that and after it had rained and things like that. And I just stated that I feel that we need to find out what the reasoning is and make sure that doesn't happen again, because I believe the same developer is doing the Heritage that did this. I don't know when he stopped in Sonoma Verde or whatever it is, but we just need to make sure that that doesn't happen again. So, yeah.
The same developer that did Phase 1 in Sonoma Verde is doing Heritage? Is that correct?
So I just want to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why I keep saying we need to find out the reasons, get it in writing and make sure our inspector, whoever it is that's supposed to do all the roads and stuff like that stays on top of it, period, end of discussion. That's just the way it is. We, we can't have this happen again. I don't know how far it is, how much the damage, in my opinion, from the moment 2:05 to wherever the furthest issue that Sonoma Verde has on that, all of that is compromised. Because unless they changed, like as they got into it and went, hey, we need to, all of that's compromised. So we just need to make sure it doesn't happen again. That's all.
This Texas soil, I don't know how you'd guarantee it. You know, developer's going to hire an engineer and then our engineer is going to inspect their work. You know, they pour these little samples and then they have to wait so many days and then they see what pressure it holds up to.
Yeah.
Before they actually pour the lengths of pavement and all. This would met all the tests at the time.
But, but also, these guys have been doing this for many years and they've stayed in this area. They're smart. They know. If they could ride that line, they're going to ride that line. And I just think we need to make sure somebody's standing on top of them, watching which side they're going to be leaning on. If nobody's on top of them, they're going to do what they want to do. It's just business. It's just business.
Any other comments?
I sound like a little negative Nellie tonight, don't I?
No comments?
No.
All right, item 7.2, discussion regarding future city council meeting dates requested by city administrator.
Yeah, so Mayor Short's schedule has changed. He is now available for meetings on Tuesday, so Julie just going to talk to you about making sure you adjust your calendars because it looks like we are going to Tuesdays now.
All right.
Starting?
The 10th of August.
Is there any way that you could send out an email to make sure that we get all the dates all the way through August? Because I know we've got next week, I believe, is Mr. Donigan.
I've got the calendar here.
I mean, because of, because of the people that are not here, if they'll send out an email to all of us, just so that we're all on the same page and nobody.
So the joint session on the 18th, is still on the 18th or will that be on Tuesday too?
He is available on the 18th, so we're looking at the special meeting on the 4th. And then you're looking at the 10th would be the public hearings and your regular council meeting. And then the 16th is the day that is the special meeting, you would adopt your budget and your tax rate that day. And then the 18th would be the joint session. And then your next regular meeting would be the 25th.
And we all have to be here on the 16th.
Oh wait, he said the next meeting on the 25th? I thought she said on Tuesday.
It's going to Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, 24th, 24th, yeah.
So 16th is the adoption, I mean, is the public hearing?
Nope, that's the 10th.
That's the 10th, yeah.
The 24th, I will not be here.
What you said was the 16th, Lisa, I'm sorry.
That's, that's a special meeting to adopt the budget and the tax rate.
The 24th, I will not be here.
What's, is that a city council meeting on the 24th?
That, the 24th would be your regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
We don't have a lot on the agenda, maybe we, oh no, we're going to have the comp plan on there.
We've got comp plan stuff coming up.
Because I was going to say, take a break and not have a meeting on the 24th.
No rest for the wicked.
Yeah.
But if you could just send out an email to everyone so that Brian and Chief and Keith are up to date on it, make sure there's no changes or issues they have.
Okay, council member reports and announcements. So I know I have one, it's the comprehensive plan draft concept and highlights is available on the plan mctx.com website for review and comment. That's going to be posted until August 8th. And a letter went out to all citizens that have their address registered with the tax records. So if you have your data masked, you're not going to get a letter, but to tell you how to participate. Also, as we said just now, we have the special meeting scheduled for August 4th where we name the new public safety building after Mr. Mike Donigan. That will be at 6:30. The day before that, for the community, it's not a council meeting, but on August 3rd at 6:30, the Rockwall ISD superintendent will be here to give us a presentation on the upcoming school year and talk about future school sites in McLennan Chisholm.
Could you include that on that email so that everyone else can, if they can make it?
Yeah, okay, do you have any issues? Council member reports and announcements?
No.
Norman?
No.
Trudy? Okay, if that concludes our meeting, it is 8:53. We're adjourned.